Open this up. And as I just informed the commission, this, you know, we're 9:30. We're going to do the constitutional officers first. We'll then do the Florida Department of Health. If we have time before lunch, we're going to do links. And then right at 1 o'clock, we're going to do the court support after that. So I wanted everybody to know it. I see that we have our constitutional officers, two of them here. Would you all do the honors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. We'll just jump right into this and we'll start right with the property appraiser. And David, you are up first. After, I, no, wait a minute, David, I understand. I said after we have, I'm going to have the opening remarks from the county manager and then Tim. That's all right. I just wanted you to be prepared. You can get up there and sit and be ready.
He wants to get us out of here.
Yeah, okay. Nicole?
I don't want to stand in the way of David getting to the mic, but this is, I want to welcome everybody to our third budget work session. Today, we are going to talk with the constitutional officers and other outside agencies and let them give you a briefing on what their budget submissions were. And then I'll talk to you a little bit at the end of the meeting about what happens moving forward. We will distribute the proposed county budget to you if you haven't already gotten it. But I don't, have we sprung it on him yet?
Yep.
Okay, so you've got it. Okay, good. So we'll talk a little bit about moving forward at the end of the meeting, but with no further ado, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Well, good morning, everyone. It's always fun to come and see you guys on an annual basis. You know, often times we come and talk about property values. And I'll touch on that just for a second once at the end because it's all good news, what we're seeing in 2021. We've been in communication with your staff about that also, so everybody's on the same page. But let's go ahead and get started with the budget. As most of you know, my budget is approved by the Department of Revenue, reviewed and approved by the Department of Revenue on an annual basis, and that's outlined in the Florida statutes. Mine along with the tax collector's budget are the two agencies that have that, if you will, process that goes on. We are required in the property appraisers office to submit the budget by June 1st. And as you have done internally, you've asked for us to give you a May 1 number over the last couple of years, and certainly we gave you a top line number on May 1st, and that did not change from what we submitted to the Department of Revenue in June. This is just the official correspondence that we submit to the Department of Revenue when we do the budget. So this is the budget summary. Again, these are forms that prescribed by the state. And you can see that it's broken up into several different areas, personnel services, operating expenses, capital outlay, and non-operating expenses. And we go back in time and then we see what that looks like for going forward. Essentially, for 2021, we're about $6.5 million. That's up from a $6.3 million budget in 2020. When we submit the budget to the Department of Revenue, again, this is for my office, and I don't want to speak for the collector, but his is the same process. There are a number of schedules that have to go along with that summary sheet. There's, it's probably 30 or 40 different pages of documentation and backup that goes along with that summary that you just talked about, that we just saw. Schedule 1 is salaries. Schedule 1A is personnel services, that's insurance, FRS, and FICA. Schedule 2 is our operating numbers, and that's professional services, transportation, equipment, and leases. Schedule 3 is capital outlay. And Schedule 4 is non-operating or contingency. We never have anything in contingency in this office, Seminole County Property Appraisers Office, but it's certainly a form that's out there. There's justification worksheets that go with all the schedules, and you can see for contracts, travel, postage, education vehicles, et cetera. We also have to submit an organizational chart that you will see at the end so that the department sees the folks that are in those seats and that they are funded appropriately. We also publish the budget as required by law on the website, and we also have published all of our audits over the last number of years that are out there too, so that there's complete transparency for the public. This is the organizational chart for the office. I know it's a little bit small to see, but this just tells you how we're organized. And again, this is something we also have to submit to departments so that they know we actually have folks in positions that they are supposed to be in. You, as a county, received three different letters from my office, one from the, for the county portion, the road portion, and the fire portion. There's a nuance in the state statute that you fund the majority of my budget, about 90-plus percent. However, the St. John's Water Management District also funds a small portion of the budget, and we submit the same letter request to them. And again, each of your funds receive a proportionate, fund a proportionate share of the budget. These are things that we're kind of proud of, and we're going to brag just for a second here in the office because I'm proud of my folks and I'm proud of this county that we work with, and we get an opportunity once a year to try to do this. But if you look at the statewide ranges for what it costs to run a property appraisers office, it runs from $9.50 in chains all the way up to about almost $75 per parcel, per person, okay? We come in at $13.15, $13.15. You can see that the statewide median is $25, so we're half of what the statewide median is. And we always like to compare, because that's what we do, with our surrounding counties. You can see where we fall into that. We are the lowest county other than Lake at 12.44 per parcel. Our friends to the north, west, northeast, Volusia County is $20.40 for the same basic services, although we think we deliver them better here in Seminole County, but it costs more to deliver them than Volusia County. We also bring in Sarasota County. I know that's always a point of comparison, that county is, because of our demographics, our size, et cetera. We just don't have a Gulf Coast, but anyway, a lot of the same demographics go on there. And they're about $16 per parcel. So again, we're proud of where we are. We're the eighth lowest in the state out of 67 counties with the 13th largest population. So again, just a moment to brag there about the office. This is another slide that we're proud of. This is a, this shows you the vector between how much the property, the tax rule has increased over the last 11 years compared to where our staffing level is. You can see that tax rules approved has increased about 6% on average for that timeframe, and our total staffing has declined. And we've been able to leverage technology and processes. I will tell you, we have great partnerships with you and the county, especially your building department, and with our friends in the clerk of the courts office, where we have transformed several processes over the years that have made what we do much more efficient, and we can concentrate of our efforts, and we're very proud of that with our partnerships that are out there. I'm proud to also announce over the last year or so, we've been working with our seven cities about their permitting process, and some were stronger than others, but we have basically automated most of that process now with our help and their help. And again, this creates great efficiencies within the office. This gives you an average of what our budget has done over the last number of years. We have an average increase in the budget, about 2.65%. The budget that we submitted for 2021 is about 2.8% increase. And some of those changes that you see that are a little bit higher are a result of what basically happened on the state level with FRS contribution, Florida Retirement System contribution. And a couple of years there, there were some insurance issues that we have, that we had to take care of, so, health insurance. So that gives you just an average, but we're on track with our average rate of increase over the years. And with that, I am finished. And as I alluded to in the very beginning, we are, you know, we're, the date of assessment, as you know, is January 1st of 2021. So we were looking back at the 2020 sales activity that was occurring to create the tax rule that you have now received the preliminary reports on and what you will use for your proposed property tax process. So we had to recognize some of the shutdowns and the things that occurred in 2020 and for the 2021 tax rule. We're six months into the 2021 cycle, and certainly what's happening now will be showing up on the '22 tax rule. I will tell you, most of those declines have been erased or in the process of being erased, and I feel that we'll be roaring back for the 2022 tax rule. We've shared this information with your staff, and they have updated some projections going forward in a positive way as far as growth goes, and we will stay on top of that as we get more numbers and so that you can make better decisions at your level, because we obviously know that's, that's, huge policy decisions are based on what the revenues potentially are going to be. So with that, I have available for whatever questions you may have.
Thank you, David. Any questions?
I've got no questions. Just thank you very much, and we appreciate your efficiency in your reporting and your detail to being conservative in your budgetary constraints. So thank you.
Very good. We try. Thank you.
Your low increase.
Yeah.
You win.
David, tell me about the future. What do you see, just, you know, just briefly, you know, coming about, changes, the use of drones, just, you know, what you see in the future for your office?
So what we, again, technology has always played a very big role in what we do. Certainly, our, the permitting system with the new construction, having, getting all the seven cities to where the county was has been monumental and has certainly improved our process. We were always there as an office. It was just we, some of our partners weren't quite there yet, but we've been working with them over the last year or so, and they're now there. I will tell you our other partnership with the clerk's office because we work very closely with them on all the deeds. That drives this process, if you will, the recordation of sales and leases and probates and all that stuff. That drives what we do as far as keeping the tax rule up to date, as far as names and addresses, and the sales activity. So we have got that almost completely automated. I shared with you last year that I had two folks that spent most of the day prior to where we are today, working through that process. When the clerk was elected, we both agreed that we were going to try to improve that process. We've employed some of technology. I now have one person that spends about an hour and a half during the day doing that same process, and we've been able to redeploy them and actually not fill some positions that have come open moving forward. To your point, Chairman Constantine, you know, we're gathering data in the field for new construction, and the much as we can push out to folks while they're in, the appraisers, you know, like they're at their desktop, that's important so when they're on the property, they see what they need to be seeing. And again, we've made those investments in technology. They certainly have paid off over the years, and they really paid off in 2020 when we had to, you know, repivot and have an idea about how are we going to continue to deliver services to the taxpayers and citizens. We couldn't just shut down. We couldn't be a restaurant, just like your folks, and not just open. We had to continue to provide things that the public expects. We processed over 9,000 new homestead applications last year, most of that being done online. And the largest tax rule in Seminole County's history occurred during a pandemic. So we're proud of that. We didn't miss a beat, but because we've been able to leverage technology and partnerships, that's what the key is, and we see that going forward. You know, one of the things that we'll tell you that we look at, you know, the rate of increase in your property values is declining. I mean, we're still increasing, but we're not increasing at the same rate. And that's just, and you know this better than anybody, it's a function of where we are as a county. We are very small geographically, and we have about a third of it cordoned off from any kind of intense development, because that's what folks want. But that creates other challenges moving forward for you as a policymaking board where your ad valorem is one of your largest resources as far as providing resources for providing services. You know, the market is still very healthy on resales, et cetera. As you know, there's two caps that are out there provided by the state constitution for non-homesteaded and homesteaded properties. And, you know, it's going to be just a matter of how much new construction continues, and, you know, we're obviously going to be getting into the redevelopment business. We're already seeing that. We're already, you know, filling in retention ponds and moving retention underground, those types of things that I think you see going forward because this is such a desirable place to live. And obviously, and this certainly causes some angst and anxiety for our taxpayers, densities are going to increase. I mean, it's, you know, it's a cliche, but it works. You can't unring the bell, okay? The bell has been rung. People want to live here. You can't keep them from coming in here. It's just, you're going to have to be able to provide some kind of housing for them. So I think we change what we look like in some cases as we move forward, and I'm talking the next 10, 20 years, but it's certainly something.
David, I'd like to publicly thank you. I know we see you on a regular basis, but it's your staff that sits behind you, not immediately behind you. But I mean, there's a lot of people that we don't see.
Absolutely.
That we all need to thank. And the reason why I say that is because you do make our job easier because of your ability to give us the numbers that you do. And the years that I've been involved, you've hit the mark every time. And as many a times we look at you to try to understand what's going to happen for the future, as the chairman talked about, but people need to realize that if we don't have good numbers, what's going to happen in the next couple of years, we can't really do our job effectively as we've been doing it. And it's a partnership that we have, not just between you and our staff, but you and your staff, as well as the other constitutional officers. And to say thank you sometimes doesn't go far enough.
We appreciate that.
So I want to say thank you.
I'm very blessed to have a great group of folks, and again, we've always had a good partnership with your folks. And Tim and I talk on, you know, not on a daily basis, but if I see something, I'm going to call him and tell him.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
But a lot of times, people don't realize that the coordination level that goes on between the constitutional officers and our staff is critical.
Absolutely.
There are a lot of counties that don't have that relationship, like the relationship with the school board. You know, a lot of counties don't have that. And it's important that we are able to talk to each other to figure out what's happening as the chairman was asking, you know, what do you see in the upcoming years? And that ability to do that and to project accurate numbers is really what makes this county well-run. So thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
If there's no other questions, thank you, David.
Very good. Thank you for having me.
Good to see you today.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Welcome, Grant. We'd love to have you and your staff today.
Hi, Chairman. Commissioner, County Manager. Thanks for this opportunity to be here today, talk about the budget, and to kind of follow up on Commissioner Delary's comments there about partnerships when we're all working together. A lot of good things are happening. I have a couple of slides on that of some of the very positive things that occurred over the past year. Just, I know I met with all of you before the meeting. Just to give you a little update for those who might not know, in the past, it was always, the last couple of years, Brent was a big part of the budget process, and Brent Holiday retired. I made a decision not to fill the deputy chair, chief deputy, excuse me, at this time, so it's vacant at the moment. But I've done a little reorganizing, and in the future budget process, as you see Jenny Spencer here, the comptroller director, is being promoted to a position where I'll oversee the courts budgets as well as the county budgets and recording budgets. They'll all be consolidated, and I think that will help out with communication and budgeting processes. So with that, I do have Kate behind me, the new administrative director, and Van will be moving over from comptroller to courts. So when you look at the clerk and comptroller budget, it's a very bizarre system. Hours and hours spent, especially on the state side, trying to make sense of the clerk of court operation corporation and all the strings attached. It's a bizarre system, so we're trying to do the best we can with some amazing talent we have here to get this going. So anyhow, with move forward on the slide here, you said point that way. I do want to thank you for the partnerships we had, especially during COVID. You know, it was a stressful time. 80% of our total budget comes from fines and fees. We don't get that much tax money. Mainly, this is the only source of tax money that comes in to fund the comptroller side, commission records and some of that thing. So when that occurred, it was extremely stressful, as you can imagine, when revenues dropped so much. Our courtside budget got cut 40% in the last quarter. It was an impossible situation, but with our great partnership and appreciate the county, county manager, we shifted a lot of employees over to the county side, worked on recording some of the old official county records, cleaning up commission records, doing a lot of projects and recording on the comptroller side to keep people employed so when the crisis ended, we could pull them back to the courts. And that's exactly what we did. I think we're one of the few counties that didn't furlough anybody during that time. So that was, without you, that wouldn't have been possible, so I appreciate that. And we got a lot of work done at the same time, kept people productive, so that was good. I wanted to show this new, with the COVID money that we put forward, the walk-up window has been a huge hit. I thought about 25% of our customers would go to that. It's probably more like 40, 50% will go off to this line. They'll actually stay in line outside versus go through the security check-in and go to a shorter line inside because they don't want to mess with the hassle of going inside the courthouse. It's been a huge hit and appreciate that partnership. Let's see here. We also, obviously at the time, thanks to your help with the social debt system, we're, our goal is to move about 25% of employees to work from home situation. We're moving forward on that technology. Also, with COVID, we pushed more things to the web. Always like to promote this since it's a new service available with the Turbo Court. People can file different types of civil actions right through the website without the assistance of an attorney. It's an intuitive form that asks you questions and fills the forms out for you, and then you can submit it. One of the other things we did that's been helping out the county is on that third paragraph there, we, they've got an administrative order to allow jurors to donate their $15 a day they get, or if it's $30 after three days, they can donate that to one of the two selected charities that the state allows. So that is the Guardian Adalitem Program and Safe House of Seminole. So we've collected about $10,000 over the last year for that. Obviously, working with the county on technology, we have a lot of things coming up here that is really making both the county, as well as the clerk's office, more efficient in serving the citizens with going with paperless process. And Jenny's department is huge. The payroll system with no time sheets is something we're still working forward. We've implemented that totally at the clerk's side, still working with that on the county. E-recording is a new system that we're putting in place this month, real state-of-the-art technology. One of the big things we've done over the past year is we've moved the redundant IT backup to this building versus having it over at the civil courthouse where there was a, the server, as you remember, was in a room, ground floor with windows, near a lake that floods with no generator backup. So now we have a very, very secure redundant system to keep county financial processes going in the event of just about anything, knock on wood. So we've really tried to enhance security. We have a new position in there for that we can talk about. And finally, before I turn it over to Jenny, we have been doing a citizens financial report, which we distributed a little bit ago. We're one of the top five comptroller offices in the state of Florida as far as the number of awards we've gotten on financial reporting. Jenny's crew does a great job on that, and something we're very proud of and continue to push for, for excellence. So I will go over, turn this to Jenny to talk a little bit about the numbers and the new positions.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, County Manager. Our budget this year compared to prior years is approximately $460,000 or 11%. And the increase, if there are two new positions that have been added, one is an accountant one for the comptroller's office, and the other is a position in our information services group for a cybersecurity network administrator. And if those two items, they total approximately $193,000. If you back those out, the actual net increase is approximately 5% or $267,000. Within the graph, it shows you of the budget, $4.3 million, approximately 47% of that represent the comptroller's office and commission records, and the others are allocated as illustrated in the graph. So the next graph just shows our budget pursuant to the uniform accounting system. And this is so that the resource management staff could correlate it with the same account numbers that we have in J.D. Utter's. So it just provides the account code, object codes for each of the categories. So like most organization, what this graph shows is approximately 75% of our budget represents personnel services, 6% represents professional and other services, 9% represents the lease for the record center, and 8% is other operating costs, and the 2% is capital outlay, which is primarily a HVAC that we're requesting for the record center.
And if I could echo on the lease aspect, we did have an increase this year. The last four years, the property owner did not increase the lease. But long-term, and I've mentioned this, I think, to all of you, would like to look at moving to a smaller facility in the future. There's about six and a half years left on that lease. Our goal is to shrink the footprint by a third, well, by two-thirds, I guess you'd say. Go to a building about a third the size, and I think that's doable. So just for your long-range planning as you're thinking about buildings. With some of the empty space, we are making space available to the sheriff's office and supervisor elections to help them with their storage needs. And we, about two weeks ago, we shredded, I think, 16 tons of paper. So we're increasing our technology to go paperless and reviewing documents and trying to get to a smaller footprint there for the future to save on resources.
And so the next graph just really depicts the FTE by departments, and it shows overall with the two, 1.62 is the two positions that have been added. One is for the comptroller's office, and the other position is in our IT group to provide cybersecurity. And I, as I understand it, this was discussed with the county's CIO. We're going to work together in tandem with him as well as other constitutional officers to address cybersecurity issues. And that concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner?
How much extra storage space do you have?
Well, we have, it's increasing, but it's kind of spread out because there are several racks in there which they're starting to empty out. The exact numbers, we'll give you a little tour if you'd like. There's one area.
I'd like to avoid that.
I'd like to avoid that. I can look at it on-
We'll take a virtual tour.
There's one, the smaller space in the back, we've dedicated to the sheriff when he's ready. The other three warehouses all have either storage of them, or they're queuing spaces, or have racks in them. As these racks become empty, there's shelf space, but not exactly empty square footage on the ground, if that makes sense. So we're having more and more empty shelves. Now, we're still in the process of pulling paper out of the courthouses. You know, it's interesting to look at the statistics. There's three million pages of documents that come to our office just on the court side each year. About a million comes in paper, about two million comes in electronic. And we scan the paper and throw that into a long electronic process. We make sure it's all correct, validate before it's destroyed. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff comes through there. But to answer your question, it's emptying up, but the problem is there's empty racks now that fill the space. So there's not like a lot of square footage you could roll things in. But if you need to put things on a shelf, we're getting more and more shelf space all the time.
And once the shelf's empty, can the racks be moved?
Yeah, they were, as I understand, the previous clerk purchased used racks and had them installed in there. So those racks are all movable.
They're movable. Okay. And I still have more questions, if that's okay.
No, please, go ahead.
Two additional positions, certainly cybersecurity, I understand that. Can you walk us through the need for the additional accountant?
Sure.
Right. I'll let Jenny talk on that. Obviously, with COVID and a lot of the other expenditures with Fleet, there's been a lot more work necessary on the payment side.
Sure. So the additional need is really because of the increased workload in the comptroller's office. Fleet was outsourced several years ago to a company and was brought in-house. And when it was brought in-house, one of the things we advocated on the county side is additional staff needed to be added. But in retrospect, I look back and I said to the clerk, we really needed to add additional staffing as well because we now have to verify all the purchases, agree them to contract prices. So that's additional work. In addition, with some of the construction that's going on with the anticipation of the annex being constructed, as well as some of the infrastructure sales tax projects that have increased, has increased the workload for the comptroller's office, as well as some of the stimulus activities that we've been kind of dealing with for the last year and anticipate going forward addressing those. So that's really the need for the additional position.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
It's not really questions, really comment. And I just want to echo what I said to David Johnson, Grant, to you and your office as well. Your staff is just phenomenal. Jenny's sitting next to you. I can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you do. And there's so many other people that do phenomenal work. So thank you, Grant, for having that leadership of putting the right people in place. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you for the-
I also want to thank you for, there's many times where I can't get on our Wi-Fi. I get on your Wi-Fi.
Today.
I also want to thank you for allowing various computers to execute on the VPN because we don't do that on some applications. So thank you for doing that as well.
Okay, very good.
Maybe, maybe we can learn some things.
Okay. We could put Wi-Fi down here, too.
Other questions? Commissioner?
Yeah. So this is something you actually gave me an update on, and I don't know if others might be interested as well. But we started talking about digital-
Some of the joint projects?
Sure. And time card, and where are we with that?
So we can provide an update. So the AP automation solution is a project that we started about a year ago. And we rolled it out into phases. We have been training with other, various departments. And we're almost at the end. I think engineer, we trained them last week, and we have a few others to train, with the goal of being fully implemented by the start of the fiscal year, which really would eliminate about ninety percent of the payments that we make are through purchase orders. And this AP automation basically would read an invoice and do OCR and identify based on that purchase order where the invoice should be charged. And so we're working with the departments, you know, explaining to them, they need to look at their processes and what procedures they need to put in place because now the steps are a lot less as far as getting an invoice, and you should expedite the processing of invoices. So that's one of the project. The other project, as the clerk mentioned, is Time Clock Plus, which is a timekeeping application that we've implemented on the clerk's side. And we're working with the county's information services department to implement it. I believe three departments are first being piloted to implement that. The other project we're working on is the electronic pay stub. So on the clerk's side, as of March 1st, we no longer have paper pay stub. And so we're working with the county's IT group and I believe HR to also implement something similarly whereby employees will be, will provide an email address where they want their stubs to be emailed, secure email, and they would be able to retrieve their pay stub.
That would be phenomenal. I think the cost savings just in that and being able to access your pay stub, I don't know how many people get it, and then you open it, and then you lose it, and you needed it. But anyway, it, maybe I've been in that position before. I don't know. It really is, is something that I think is long overdue, and the fact that we're working together to get that done is going to be fantastic.
The, one other project that I know that's what the clerk's desires to do is an automation of the board minutes with the agenda. We've talked with James, the CIO, as well as others for the current system. As I understand, Novus is probably going to change, but that's something that we're going to monitor to see how it progresses so that we can implement that process.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good luck. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
I just wanted to say, congratulations, Jenny. Well deserved.
Thank you.
And Jenny, I'm going to let you earn your keep for a minute. Again, I want to echo the relationship aspects of what the commissioners have commented on. Grant, you know, from the very beginning, you and I have had a very good relationship as we come in. And I'm just, I enjoy and appreciate the hard work and effort that your department puts in. There's just, it's just one question, and that's why I said I let you earn your keep. There is a, you know, when people come in and ask, I just want to make sure that we understand that we have twelve point six, you have eleven point seven increase in your budget. And I wanted to know what that difference is, county manager, what, you know, why we have twelve six, and you have eleven seven. And number two, just so we know, the eleven seven, what, why is that an increase? You suggested it, but I want it specific to that.
Sure. So are you referring to the eleven point percent increase, the four hundred and sixty thousand?
Eleven point seven percent increase that you say.
Correct. That is basically a change between what we, what was adopted last year, along with a budget amendment that we received for the three percent increase, as well as what we're requesting this year. Now, the difference may be, the number that is presented in the county may not have accounted for the budget amendment, whereas in our number, we show what was adopted as well as what was amended, which was a budget amendment that we came back, once the county elected to give the three percent increase, we came back and requested that amount. So perhaps the difference relates to the fact that they're using the initial adopted budget and not the budget amendment amount of thirty thousand, three eighty-three.
Thank you. Grant, did you want to add anything?
I think that sums it up pretty good.
Any further, yes, go-
Chairman, I would like to thank Lori and Tim. Just similarly, as you were saying, the partnership, it's been a really great working relationship with not just resource management, but information services. And obviously, we can get a lot more done working together than working against each other. And it has really proven that having that relationship and partnership, working collaboratively to get one, you know, goal accomplished, has really proven to be beneficial. So thank you, Lori and Tim.
Thank you. Appreciate. Any other questions, Commissioner?
Grant, moving forward, what is your vision for budget increases? I know you've, you've come in behind your predecessor, made a lot of changes. A lot of technology has come to bear upon your office in collaboration with the other partners. Do you see that, are we getting to a point where that is starting to wind down? Or do you perceive that over the next several years, there's going to be additional needs to get you to where you ultimately want to be?
Right. That's a good question. I think we're kind of balancing out. When I took over the office, there was a lot of empty positions. There was a lot of backlog of projects. We had tape drive backups. We had an IT system that was about to crash. And if it did, it would have taken six months to get something going again. So it was quite a chaotic event. I think we're at a really, my goal is to be a professional office, do a good job. You know, as you know, you're having more and more problems competing with the private sector to get good work. It's something we're constantly having problems with to get people with accounting backgrounds. There's a lot of options out there. So, long story short, I see this as a stable budget here for the future. But we always want to keep in mind any types of changes in the workplace where we have to compete, and how do we address those challenges in the future? We don't always know what they are.
Sure.
But it's really, I think, the level of professionalism and expertise is really quite high here. And Seminole with our working relationship, and I just see that as a good working environment and don't see a lot of crisis in the future. But a year ago, I didn't, you know, know what was going to happen either. So, but I think it's going to be much more stable.
So you believe now you've got that office set up as pretty much a pretty efficient, well-willed machine, leveraging technology? Or do you believe there's additional steps of significance?
I think now it's fine-tuning. For instance, when we merge the two finance departments, the communication will be better. And also, we have the ability, right now, we have two different payroll departments. There's a county and a clerk one. So we can combine those. We can do some cross-training, share resources. So that's what I'm looking for in the future is more efficiencies. How do we cross-train? We're going to, I think, one of the things that's going to help is we go to a smaller footprint. Well, we're going to a smaller footprint, but also putting more people in one location and combining the comptroller with the clerk's side is what happens in a lot of other counties. I know Jenny's been doing a lot of research on that, talking with other comptroller directors. So I think there's a lot of efficiencies to be gained from the technology improvements as well as some of the, just the co-location and cross-training of different departments.
Great.
So I think it's going to be much easier to tackle tough issues in the future with that model.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lockhart?
Of the increase that Commissioner Constantine was asking you about, are any of those needs able to be utilized, used, filling, being filled with ARPA funds? I heard revenue replacement as an issue earlier. Is that something that we've talked about?
Yes. Actually, Commissioner, before the meeting, I was actually researching. One of the options the ARPA allows is a loss of revenue. I haven't had a chance to speak with the clerk, but I was actually going through the Q and A prior to the board meeting. The Government Finance Officers Association has issued a template for determining the loss of revenue, and I wanted to share that information with the clerk to let him know that I would like to do the calculation. It requires you to go back three years to look at your revenue. And really, when you think of the impact, the other constitutional offices were not impacted like the clerk, like clerks were impacted. So other clerk's offices are actually going back to their county commission and providing the information and say, here's our lost revenue. We'd like to submit it for reimbursement through ARPA. The other, as I understand, the other thing that ARPA allows is the cybersecurity. So perhaps there's an opportunity there for that additional position while ARPA's in effect to fund it, using those funds. And once it's over, then at that point, the county would start funding it.
I mean, we can review that. I think some of the stuff we've read is cybersecurity wouldn't be eligible, but we can talk about what the opportunities are. We have already looked at the revenue replacement for the county as a whole as well, and what the opportunities are there.
Yeah. I think from my perspective, any of those dollars that we can use now because of what we experienced because of COVID, that's what, what we should utilize first. And so I'm glad to hear you're already looking into that. That'd be great.
When you look at the, I know it has nothing to do with you. This is a state issue. But when you look at the courtside funding of our office, it's just something that can't sustain itself for the future. If you look at the two thousand, I was looking at this the other day, the two thousand and five submission of our budget to the Clerk of Court Operations Corporation, at that time, the budget spending limit was eight point six million. And if you factor that with inflation, it'd come out to about eleven and a half million in today's dollars, you know, sixteen years later. There were two hundred and thirty-one employees at the clerk's office today. Last I checked, there was one hundred and ninety-two. There's, it's just, and there's more people here. There's more documents coming through. So if we didn't have technology, I mean, we, if we didn't have the eportal and the technology like that, we'd be just dead in the water. And it's, it's a real struggle. I know that has nothing to do with you. But on the, when the revenue went through, nobody helped the clerks. It was, there was nothing. So we just tried. And thank goodness, we had this partnership to shift people around. So it's a real struggle on, on the state side. And it, I don't see a good solution for it with just what happens every year at the session.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Grant, and thank you very much for all-
And in comparison, just one, I was getting on my CCOC bandwagon, but our budget last year was eight point one million. So we have a smaller budget than comparative sixteen years ago on the court side. It's a real struggle to keep serving. But I sure appreciate your partnership. It makes it easier.
Thank you, Grant.
Well, thank you, everybody. Jenny, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm just, because we're doing these budgets individually, I'm just going to, now that we've done the first two, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on the first two budgets? Seeing none? Good. We're going to move on to the supervisor of elections and Mr. Anderson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, we are. Go right ahead, Chris.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that, you know, we had two hundred and sixty-two thousand voters vote in the general election last year. And it was probably the most difficult time in our office's history. But one of the things that made it a little bit easier to deal with was the cooperation amongst the entire government in Seminole County. I remember sending an email out to every county manager, every city manager in the county, along with the county manager, asking for help, and we got it. So that's one of the things I wanted to point out that made us successful last year was the collaborative help. And I remember specifically, the last time we met, that Commissioner Lockhart, you made a statement about working together. And we certainly did that last year. And not only were we successful at doing that, but the United States Elections Commission, they recognized us for having elections innovation. So we're one of a small group of election offices across the United States of America that were recognized for our efforts last year. So as I sit here, I hope that you understand my, my purpose, and you will see my passion, and together we will have progress. So with that, I will close, and I will open it up for any questions.
I'll, I'll start, Chris. I think you need to be, do a little bit more within the context of your budget. Just go through your budget a little bit, please.
Sure. Absolutely. So we will start with the most significant part of our budget that you will see an increase, which is in our personnel services. We are in a moment of growth at the supervisor of elections office. Over the past couple of months, I have done extensive research as to where our office needs to be. We're both behind in just brick and mortar, but also in staffing. That was an issue that I identified very early on when I came into office, and it's something that's going to take a while to improve, but we should get there. One of the things that I recognize is that, you know, vote by mail for years in Seminole County has always been on an increase. It's the second most popular method of voting. And I have decided to create a dedicated vote by mail unit, which means that two employees will be designated to focus on that particular method of voting. And as you all are aware, that particular method of voting was under some pretty heavy scrutiny last year. So it requires a more focused and discipline from our staff. And we're going to increase our staffing table by three positions. So obviously, the increase in regular salaries and of course, social security and retirement will have a natural increase as we bring in more people. As I heard the clerk mention, and I'll reiterate, it's a bit difficult to, to hire folks at this point. It's not easy. We have hired one of the three positions that we currently have open. That was not a new FTE position. That was a previous position. We've had folks leave for, for many different reasons. But we look to be able to get the supervisor of elections staffing table to a place where it can sustain, given a lot of the things that affect it, from attrition to resignation to dismissal. You know, the supervisor of elections office has been operating with the same amount of staffing since nineteen ninety-eight, although our population, our population increase in voters has been significant over the years. We are actually, I did a survey of like offices, SOE offices, in four areas: total square footage, also employees, and warehouse square footage and office square footage. And what I found out of the twelve SOEs that responded to the survey is that we were very last in per square foot, per voter. So we need to make some changes, and it's going to be a growth, and I've mentioned this before in the past as well, it's going to be a smart growth plan to get us to where we need to be so we continue to operate and give our voters elite services. So that's one area where you will see a major increases or slight increases with hiring of new employees. We also have a very significant employee who will be exiting our agency in two, in twenty twenty-three. And this employee has been, is the longest-serving employee of the office. And all of you here know exactly who she is because you hand her your paperwork when you file to run for office. And she will be leaving, and that's going to be a very significant impact to our agency. She has seen a lot of changes that have, has taken place with our office, and Charlene Pike will sorely be missed. But to replace her is not going to be an easy task. I remember last year watching Charlene check in mail ballots, and that was just another list of things that she does that I quickly learned. All of us in the building were- All of us in the building wear many hats when it's at all times, and Charlene wears a lot of those hats. So, she's recommended that it will probably take two individuals to replace her, which is a part of the reason for the increase. And I look forward to Charlene onboarding those individuals ahead of time so we can be prepared for her exit. Now, the way you get prepared is by being able to actually give people an opportunity to train during election times. So this year, although we didn't anticipate it, but we have to be ready, we're looking at potentially four municipal elections. We know that it's more than likely going to be three. Qualifying period for one of the cities doesn't end until August. So, we plan on bringing folks in so they can get their feet wet, because to toss someone into a presidential election year when nothing else is taking place is pretty difficult. So we want to get people trained and ready to go so they are prepared. And one of the most important things that Charlene does is she prepares this budget that's sitting in front of me. So she works very closely with the supervisor in maintaining our accounting along with the clerk's office. So, you know, that's going to be a very difficult position to fill, and I'll, if you have any suggestions, I'd love to hear them, please pass it my way. But that's where you're going to see in professional services. Now, the next increase is going to be something that none of us could control, which is minimum wage. I mentioned this last year as well, on the ballot in November was going to be an initiative for folks to vote themselves a pay raise, and that's exactly what they did. It passed, and because of that, our seasonal staff will, is going to be affected by that. By September of this year, we will have to raise up their pay to $11 an hour, and it'll be a dollar thereafter every year. So, we have anticipated that, and that is also calculated into our budget. Not to mention, as we sit here in an apportionment year, we are getting prepared for redistricting. And I'll talk a little bit more about how that's going to impact temporarily, but impact this particular budget. And although I can't tell you exactly what's going to happen with the district lines as you all serve in your districts, but, or how many precincts we will see as an increase, I can tell you that there will be an increase. Right now, precinct 71 in Oviedo has 8,000 voters. And the reason being is because from the last time we did the census to now, there has been an explosion of growth in the Oviedo area, and that precinct is the largest precinct in the county. So, I fully anticipate that we are going to split that precinct up as we move forward. So that will be at least one additional precinct, then maybe another precinct over in the West Altamont area. We are currently right now doing as much preliminary work as we can. As you know, the data for redistricting will not be to us until late September, early October, so it's not much we can do. Now, the next part of the budget where you will see a small increase, as we move out of Personnel Services, let's get into operating. And one of the things in professional services is our legal counsel. Over the past year, let me say it this way, after the session ends with the legislator and they pass legislation regarding elections, anything involving elections, I have come to anticipate some type of litigation that's going to come from it. Now, there is a court order or a ruling that came from the 11th Circuit that said, if you're going to sue the governor or the secretary of state in regards to elections laws, you have to enjoin all 67 Supervisor of Elections to do that. That just happened last year. So now, every lawsuit that is filed has my name on it, along with my colleagues. And that is to make it legally binding, because although the secretary of state is the chief elections officer of the state, they have no authority over the conduct of the office. So that is why that court ruling was made. Because of that, we have had to, in some cases, group together as SOEs and use other legal services to defend us. We had major lawsuits. I can tell you that I was in a deposition for five hours over these lawsuits, and it was quite a bit of work. And also too, now that we've seen a growth in vote by mail, we've had to extend our canvassing days. And if you weren't aware, as you serve on the canvassing board, that canvassing board actually has a different legal barrier than the office. The canvassing board itself can be sued aside from the elections office. So because of that, we have to use our legal services that we have right now to also defend the canvassing board as they operate. And we've had to increase those days just to be able to continue to count the 137 mail ballot requests that are on file right now. So, what we learned last year is, as we budgeted prior to, that we didn't realize how many lawsuits we were actually going to have to defend ourselves in, and the amount of days that we would need for canvassing with the increase, and we went over that limit and we were able to supplement it. However, we want to make sure that we have it appropriately budgeted moving forward. As I sit in front of you right now, there are three lawsuits taking place, and we have grouped together as Supervisor of Elections. And what we try to do is, our general counsel can defend most things, but in some cases, it does require a more familiar, more familiar law firm to handle these things, especially in the Tallahassee area where most of these cases are filed. So in times, we need to utilize the services of other legal aides, and we are able to group together and kind of get a better cost for the, for the services that we're asking for. So, I fully anticipate that that's pretty much going to be par for the course moving forward. The session's going to close, and most likely, there may be some type of legislation surrounding whatever was passed. That's what I've seen so far, and I have no reason to believe anything differently than that. The next area you're going to see is a increase in our transportation line. And that's just an increase that you will see decrease next year. I will remind the board that, differently than any of my other constitutional colleagues, our budget is cyclical. One year, it's going to be higher than the next, and that's just because of the work that's involved from year to year. Last year, we came in with a 14.4% decrease in our budget, and that was because 2021 is a year where we're not going to have any countywide elections, and the municipal elections are paid for by the municipalities. But this budget year, we will have, we will have two elections, a primary and a general, which there's going to be natural increases because of that. We're hiring election workers, we have to train them, they are paid, we have to do many different things. And one of those things is countywide mailer. We have to do a countywide mailer. When COVID-19 affected all of us last year, you know, there was a lot of talk of different things that we could do. I realized that, you know, first of all, none of us budgeted for the effects of COVID-19. But I thought to myself, the most effective way to vote safely in that environment was to vote by mail. So I knew we had a vote by, or a voter card mailer going out. By law, we have to send out that mailer to each and every voter. That's your information. That's saying, hey, take a look at this information, make sure that it's correct, and if it's not, you need to update it with our office, because there are some elections coming up that you're probably going to want to participate in. So make sure that you've updated your address correctly, your party affiliation, and everything is still the same, and if not, let us know. So we're required to send that out. What I did is I redesigned the mailer with my team and came up with a way to provide a mail ballot request form, and also a, we also remind voters that in August, it is a primary election. So if you're not of a major party affiliation, what you would be eligible to vote for may be a little bit differently than any other voter. So that's essentially a three mailers in one. That's about $172,000. So that's what's going to cause that 246% increase, is that we have to send that mailer out, and that's expensive. And of course, the postage that goes along with it. Now, when we send the mail ballot request form out, we do that for folks as a courtesy, but we also explain in the mailer that you don't necessarily have to send the mailer in, you can call us, or you can go online to complete the mail ballot request form. So, we didn't see it necessary to provide postage return. And I can tell you that I, as recently as last Friday, have been asked to provide postage on that by one of the political parties, to which I declined. And the next area is the printing. So, even though the general election of next year is in another budget year, I will remind the board that UACVA ballots, which are overseas and military ballots, they have to go out 45 days prior to the election. So if you look at that timeframe, the mailing happens in September, which is actually in the previous fiscal year, and also, we have to prepare the ballot and send it to our printer that, and we have to give time for that. So the cost of the general election, the majority of it from election worker costs, are all going to be inside of this budget. So anything that you're looking at now is also including the primary and general election vote by mail cost for next year. The next place would be our operation, our operating supplies, which is our precinct supply line. We have to anticipate that there are going to be some increases in our precincts. So we have to be prepared to purchase more of everything, right? It's like creating a new office. You got to have more check-in stations, you have to have more tables, more chairs, more battery backups. So that's why you will see that increase, is because we're anticipating the need for new precincts, the incoming new precincts, and being able to properly staff them with the necessary materials needed to do that. We've added some cybersecurity layers on top of that as well. We have a NESIS platform that monitors our entire network along with Albert, that was offered to us by the Department of State, but unfortunately, they didn't give us any money when they made that offer. So, I believe it was free the year, last year when we had it, and now we are required to pay for it. The Albert sensor, which is a sensor that is an overall IDS, which is a detection system that alerts us to any nefarious behavior on our, malicious behavior on our website or on our overall network, that cost increased. At one point, it was $11,120, $180, now it's increased to $12,190, I believe. So those costs are going to continue to increase. Now, the next thing is capital outlay. Last year, I presented a budget that had zero capital outlay. I said that we would not buy another printer or anything. Last year, we were just going to focus on taking care of our folks and getting through the election cycle. Seminole County has purchased new voting equipment, which we are, which we did in 2017, and, which was a good thing. But now we're in a new era of voting equipment. You can expect that any equipment that we purchase is going to come with its high level of maintenance and licensing fees. We need another high-speed counting machine. The importance of that high-speed counting machine, make sure that we meet our deadlines for vote by mail, that we are producing our results, in not just a timely manner, but in the manner in which Seminole County has always submitted our results. I'm proud to sit here and say that we are one of the first major counties in the state of Florida to always produce fair, safe, and accurate results in a very efficient manner, and those 850s help us do that. What we realize is with the increase in population, that those machines are putting in a lot of work, and they will go down. The machines are actually handmade, and none are available as they speak. This is an area where we'd like to have the funds available to us, so in the event that a 850, which is the current version, and the new version is called the 950, if one of those become available, I can tell you that it's going to be a first come, first served as all the SOEs in the state get in line to purchase that next piece of equipment. And lastly, the, one of the largest parts of our budget that we see an increase is going to be in the contracted services area, and that is because of redistricting. The county IT staff will not be doing redistricting this year. I believe the workload is that intense that they've asked us to do it on our own. We want to make sure that the software that we utilize to do it is consistent with the software that we already use, which is in our county GIS department. The super, or the property appraiser has the same GIS system that they use for what they do, and also, the county has the same, so we're going to go after the same. That way, that data transfers seemingly without any issues. Four licensing agreements is what we would need, and that's going to put us at 5,000 a pop, so that's a 20,000 increase. Now, the good news is, we'll only need it this year, and after this year, that's it. It comes out of the budget. So, that is a very temporary increase that will decrease most significantly once we get past redistricting. So other than that, I have wrapped up the areas of increase, and I'm open for any questions.
Questions?
Is Chairman, a question, but not for Supervisor of Elections, for our staff. From what I just heard, was that due to redistricting, our IT department or GIS department can't handle it, and that's why they're doing it?
Yeah, they asked that because of the, the amount of work that is going to be presented with it, that they, that we do it on our own this time around. In the past, they've done it.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking the county manager.
Sure. I'm not aware of that. We're fully prepared to do redistricting now. I don't know, Chris, are you talking about you're redoing your precincts? Because the actual redistricting, yeah, precincts, he's talking about precincts, we're talking about districts. We'll handle the districts.
Right. So they would prefer to split that up and allow us?
Two separate issues, correct, yes.
So, Chris, will we talk about it? Do you talk about it in that context? Because when you talk about redistricting as a whole, I'm looking at it from the countywide perspective. You're looking at it from a precinct perspective.
Precinct level.
So, if you could use the word precinct, I greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. And that is, that is correct, yes. It is at the precinct level that we will be utilizing these licensing agreements.
That's why I was confused.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Commissioner Zimbetta?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, on your, going back to your discussion, on your line on a transportation posted, you were talking about your countywide mailouts for, for mail-in ballots, at $289,381. Is there a statutory requirement that we have to do that?
Yes.
Okay. That every, every individual has to be now mailed a opportunity to request, or solicit that they request, other than them actually going online and doing it?
No, we're not required to send them out a mail ballot request. What I do is I'm essentially using the entire eight and a half by 11 piece of paper and killing three birds with one stone. Instead of doing so many mailers, and the reason why we would attach a vote by mail request this time around is because there's been some statutory law changes with vote by mail. Your vote by mail request is only good for one general election cycle. So as we told the legislator this year, which they did not do, the talk was of requiring us to scrap every vote by mail request that we have on file right now, which is 137,000, and start from fresh. They respectfully did not put that into the new law, Senate Bill 90. So those folks are grandfathered in, but we still are going to need to reach out and educate voters as, to let them know now that, look, your ballot, your mail ballot request is only good for one general election cycle now. So, you want, if it's going to expire, please update your mail ballot request. Another thing is, there's going to be another requirement for your mail ballot request now. Beforehand, it was essentially just putting your name, your address, and checking the box whether or not you wanted it for that election or 20, or two general election cycles. Now you're going to have to provide your driver's license number or the last four of your social. So now, with the new form that needs to go out, we want to make sure that we're circulating the correct forms and giving voters the opportunity to renew their vote by mail requests in the event that they believe that it's going to expire. And they can always call the office and let us know. This is a very fiscally creative way to avoid doing another mail- This is a very fiscally creative way to avoid doing another mailer, because we're already going to be contacting all voters to include vote by mail voters. So now, we're addressing voters that may decide to vote by mail, or voters who currently vote by mail and may be facing a renewal deadline.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused, or maybe I didn't ask the right question. So you're saying you're already doing this mailing, and have been doing this mailing?
This is correct.
But we have a $289,000 increase?
And where exactly are you referring to, Commissioner?
We have a 246% increase on your transportation postage. Looks like you're billing that to your account line item 5304-2000.
Oh, correct. And another reason, obviously, the cost is going to increase because of more voters. Between the general election of 2018 and general election of 2020, we increased almost 40,000 voters. That's a massive increase in just two years' time. So of course, now, there's going to be more butter that's needed for that big, that bread as it increased. So that is a part of the increase as well, is that now, we're actually mailing out to more people.
Okay, so that, that, is it transportation or is it postage?
That is tran, that's both.
Okay. So going back to the mailout that you indicated you're doing and reaching citizen outreach or voter outreach, that's something that is new?
That is not new.
Or something that's ongoing?
And let me, and.
And that cost difference is, the difference in the amount of voters that have increased since the last cycles? I'm just trying to understand.
True.
And then getting back to it, are we required, or is your office required statutorily to send that out? And if so, when did that occur?
So I don't know exactly when that was placed into law, but that is all, that is a current law that we have to do, which we did last year as well. We have to do it in an election year. So you, it's an increase from the year prior budget, because obviously, in this current fiscal year that we're in, we wouldn't be doing a county-wide mailer. So that's why it's such a significant increase. Now, the next year after that, you will see a 246, 246% decrease, because we wouldn't be doing a county mailer. So that is why it's a cyclical increase.
And the three things that you were indicating that you're accomplishing that single mailer again are what?
We will be accomplishing voter, at the top of the page will be your voter information card, and that would be meeting the state statute. The next thing is, you know, vote by mail. Please renew if you haven't already. Call our office, or go online if you so choose to do so. And the second thing is to close primary mailer. We like to remind our voters, because we get a lot of phone calls about it, that if you are of no party affiliation, there are only going to be certain things that you are eligible to vote for in the primary election. What this does is it kind of slows the phone calls and the amount of processing that we have to do, and it gets a lot of that working ahead of time, because before primary election, party changes happen quite frequently. And now, to do any type of change on your voter registration application, you have to provide not only your date of birth now, but you have to require, you have to provide your driver's license or the last four of your ID. So we want to make sure that we get that working ahead of time, because all those apps have to be processed and be prepared for whatever they may be. That person may decide that they want a vote by mail ballot, so now, we have to make sure that there is a vote by mail ballot prepared for them with the proper ballot style, proper party, and inevitably, there will be some voters that will change their party affiliation at the last minute, and then request another vote by mail ballot, because they want to participate in certain races that may have something to do with a major party primary. So we're accomplishing three mailers in one.
So is this the mailer that the last cycle created some kind of confusion with the public that I'd received emails and calls about, they were uncertain what this mailing was about? I think your office and mine talked about it on several occasions.
Yes, I believe so.
I think I gave some of those people to you and said, hey, you probably should reach out to these folks.
It was a new mailer that the county hadn't seen before.
Okay.
But that was our way of addressing the climate of COVID-19, because we all, obviously, got phone calls from voters wanting to know what the best method of voting for, was, and obviously, staying at home and voting in person was one of the ways to do that. That mailer was actually, we were the first SOE office in the state of Florida to do that. I in turn took that mailer and sent it to 12 other SOE offices, because they found that mailer to be most useful. And one of them, I always mention, is Miami-Dade, because in our line of business, if it can work in Miami-Dade County, it can pretty much work anywhere else in the state, so.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry for the interruption.
Commissioner Lockhart, and then Commissioner Hurd.
Chris, when you were talking about the, the training simultaneously, you're bringing folks on because you don't want them to learn on the fly in the middle of a presidential cycle, are you going to dual encumber those positions?
So what I'm going to do is, with Charlene Pike in the next fiscal year, she will be promoted to deputy supervisor of elections. And her role specifically is going to be to address the staffing and get all the folks on board it. Her timeline for retirement is a good timeline for all of us to be prepared for the next presidential election cycle, which is going to be in the, in the, in the spring of 2023. So her job is to, going to be to train the administration department on all areas of everything that she does, so we are prepared as we step into the 20, the 2024 election cycle, which is going to have three elections. Of course, it, you know, she's sorely going to be missed, because she's been, like I said, she's the longest-serving employee with a lot of experience, and she does a lot of different things that, you know, we, I'm still learning to this day, because she's just weaving, she's woven into the fabric of the agency. So she's going to be training those individuals on preparing budgets, and as you know, that happens in the spring of, for us every year. So we want to give her, her predecessor time to learn and ask questions, and make sure that she's providing the county with the, the necessary information that they need in the same way that you're used to receiving it, and that it's accurate, and that they feel comfortable with stepping into the next cycle. Now, also, candidate services, and that's where most of us know Charlene from, that is a, that's a, that's a beast of an assignment. Your job is to make sure that candidates are following all laws in regards to campaign finance. So you are onboarding those candidates, you are reviewing all their paperwork, you're making sure that they are keeping up with their, turning in their reports, you're answering questions. I think the, the joke around the county is, if you don't know, just call Charlene. So, and mo, and people do. But now, it's going to be someone else that they're going to have to call. And we want to make sure that this person gets in and works with me as I conduct candidate workshops to educate candidates and get them prepared and ready to go. So that's another large area. And also, HR. HR was a section of our office that was kind of combined with the previous assistant supervisor of elections. I think all of us take our positions and we make them to our strengths, and that's exactly what our previous assistant supervisor did. When she left, that responsibility fell to Charlene, and that was just kind of adding on to everything else. So we knew at some point that we were going to have to bring in some help to relieve her, but when Charlene announced that she would be retiring, that was a clear, that was an opportunity, if you will, to not only bring someone else in in the HR fashion, but to bring someone else in to handle budgetary and candidate issues. So it's going to be an entire department of individuals. Now, the deputy supervisor position is a position that will most likely change as we move, as Charlene exits the agency. So that will not be a high-salary position on our books after she leaves. Also, you're going to see a reduction in the amount of retirement. Any new person that we bring on, we won't automatically make them senior management level and FRS, which means that the amount of contributions that Charlene Pike has received is pretty high because of her years in service. So this new person coming on is obviously not going to start where Charlene left off. They're going to be at a much lower rate, salary rate, and also, a much lower rate when it comes to retirement contributions. And that's another place where we saw an increase, because we added an extra department, which is now operations, and we added that chief into senior management. So there's a slight increase, but there will be a slight decrease once Charlene leaves.
Follow-up?
Yeah, so I'm trying to follow, and, and I don't, and I'm not nitpicking, I'm just trying to get it in my brain. So it sounds like you're adding X number of positions, you're reorging the organization, and then you're going to reorg again. So how many, how many open positions do you have now?
Three.
Okay. And so you're filling those in addition to moving people around and adding how many new people?
Just three. So the only thing I'm doing is just taking Charlene from a, and vacating the chief administrative officer position. We're going to add two more people to the administrative department, which would be her replacements.
So are those new positions, or are those current positions that are just open and not filled?
Those are new positions.
Okay.
So when I say the three, that is included in that.
Okay.
The only, only other new position would be our vote by mail work league.
Can you draw me a map? I would really, I seriously, I'm, I'm, I want to see, like, what you have going on now, like in an org chart maybe, and then what it is you're swapping to?
Absolutely.
So that we can kind of see where, what the, and I don't care who, I mean, I don't care who they are.
No, no, no.
But I'm just having a hard time following. So you're not going to have any dual encumbered?
No, I will not.
Okay.
And the good, and the reason this is very, not confusing, but it's new to us, is, you know, I've looked at other agencies and their org charts, and it's not all consistent. Some folks do things a little bit differently. But one thing I did find is that they've had these disciplines properly staffed, and they're important disciplines, from HR to candidate services to administrative duties. So what Charlene, Charlene's job will be moving forward is to make sure that those areas and responsibilities are properly staffed, along with any, anything else that Charlene does. And then, when she leaves, that major position will decrease, and we will be back to normal operating procedures after that.
Commissioner Hurd?
Thank you, and I have a series of questions. Let's start with the mailing. Is the actual function of the mailing as inexpensive as it can possibly be while meeting the statutory requirement?
Yes.
So all of the additional stuff that we're adding adds no expense to it?
No. The only thing that, like I said, we'll create it, is now we're mailing out to more people. That was the purpose of creating the mailer in the manner in which we did, because we told the legislator that, you know, this is going to cost across the state about four to six million dollars to reach out to voters and re-educate them about the new law changes with vote by mail. And I was very happy to know that we had created a mailer that can kind of do two things at once, so we wouldn't see such a massive increase. Now, and my other colleagues, they're going to possibly do two mailers, but we would only have to do one.
And is there a reason that all of the preparation is back to presidential year, election year numbers? So the differential is 40,000 in terms of response rate, presidential to non-presidential, or at least, that's what I just heard in this conversation, I believe. But all of your numbers are triggered to presidential years. So from my perspective, just to share, before you give me a really long answer, is the number should be triggered toward a non-presidential year, plus the population growth, whatever that percentage is, so it's sum delta off of 40,000. It's lower than 40,000.
And I'm trying to follow, what, what, what's the question?
The question is, why would we trigger everything to the presidential year numbers when it's a non-presidential year?
So these numbers aren't triggered actually to a presidential election year, they're, they're triggered to essentially a gubernatorial year. So next year, we won't have three elections, the pre, the preference, primary, and the general. We'll just have two, which is the primary and the general. So what these numbers are, these are increases based on the workload that we will have in preparation for those two elections next year. Now, remember, as I said earlier, a lot of the cost of these elections come out of the previous budget year, which is the one in which we're talking about, because the general election occurs in November, which will be in the 2022, 2023 election cycle, or fiscal year. However, the cost associated with that election will have to be paid prior to that in order to make sure that we are meeting our deadlines.
And Commissioner, what we can do for you is give you a comparison of the historic budgets for the year following a presidential election, because I think that's what you're looking at. You've got it? Okay, good.
Which is what generated the question. With regard to the positions, what I'm hearing, I think, is that you're going down one at some point with Charlene, and up to, up three, which is a net two, over what I think is two years. So in this year, you're looking at three additional positions. At the point that Charlene retires, you would be down one. That would show in a future budget. Do I understand that well?
That is correct.
And the last question, I would like, given the scope of this increase, and I've looked past the fact that it's an increase over a non-election year, I've looked back to multiple years of increases. It looks like from 19, we went from 2.8 million to 3.9 million in '20, and down to 3.3, and we're back up to 3.9. I would imagine there was some infrastructure investment in the 3.9 to start out with, and we boomeranged right back up to that. So it's difficult for me to look at this in summary format only. So I need probably five years detailed format of the budget down to the, what, what, what I would call a P and L, to be shared in order to help me with this.
Sure, absolutely.
And I would also like to see the survey that was conducted
Okay.
of all of the other supervisor of elections.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm going to just say this, that we have invoked Ms. Pike's name a number of times here in this presentation. I think we all recognize, you know, quite frankly, my mother, who has been my, been one of my folks that took care of every one of the reports over the years. It's always nice to make sure your mother is there, you know that you're going to do it right, because she's going to make sure. But she, she invokes the name of Charlene Pike every single time she does that, that that's important.
Very true.
So Chris, it sounds to me that you've got a lot of things to take care of over the years. I will tell you, over the next couple of years, I will tell you that, as you know, I was in support of the increase when you were looking at the presidential election. I'm going to share the concerns that my fellow commissioners have in this budget. I think that you've got a little bit of pencil sharpening, in my opinion, to do. Unlike the other constitutional officers' budgets, yours is all ours. You know, we're the ones that have to go over it, as opposed to the others that are the Department of Revenue or someone else.
Yes, sir.
So I, I would just suggest to you that you get with our staff and see if there's some cost-cutting opportunities here before we finish off with all this budget. And is that, would that be something that others would can, would agree with? Commissioner Zimbauer?
And I would ask our staff, work with the supervisor, I'd like to see a matrix of any statutory requirements directly related to this budget and the increases because of that change.
Absolutely.
And I think that the, another thing that I would just like to add is that the, we don't really know the ramifications of the new elections law.
Right.
And I think that that's something that I think all of us, in relation to this budget, need to make sure that we are covering, because the last thing that I want to do is to make it more, I mean, it's, Mr. Ansh is already indicated, it's going to be more difficult. I, for one, can see a lot of people that would be hesitant to give their, their voter, their driver's license, or the last four digits of their social security. So, you know, we, we want to make it. you know, we, we want to make it as open as possible, because as you have indicated, our citizens have taken advantage of that a great deal, more percentage-wise than many, many others, without, without problems.
Without.
So I, I want to make sure that we keep the opportunity for an election process open and, and free of encumbrances as we possibly can. But, and so we want to look at the incorporation of this new election law, but at the same time, we think that we're not questioning you, we just see the numbers and the fluctuations and say, you know, yes, in the presidential election, but then to go right back up again, we're a little concerned. We'd like to take a harder look at that.
Absolutely. And one of the things that we can most certainly take a look at is our capital outlay. Like I said, that's a 100% increase from last year when I took it to zero.
Commissioner.
Those machines, machines are not ready right now. So we can remove that from the budget, which will have a very sharp increase. What I'd like to see is a commitment from the board that in the event that that machine does become available, that we can come back at a later date and discuss being able to procure that machine. It does take a while to, I understand, to get those approvals, but we would most certainly like to work with county staff and to make sure that if we did remove that from the budget, which is $127,000, which is a lot for our budget, that we would be able to come back if needed be to obtain those funds to go ahead and purchase that next $850.
And Mr. Anderson, I just want you to know that Commissioner Delory and I were here when we had that mid-year budget adjustment to get new machines
Yes, sir.
from your predecessor. So I don't think that this board would have, if that was something that you and the staff had agreed to, that I don't see this board disagreeing with that. But, you know, again, we know that we just bought new machines recently.
And as I said, as you purchase a machine, it will come with its own cost for maintenance, which is a pretty hefty price that we don't control. So I think that that may be a good step moving forward, as you talk about sharpening the pen, that we can do that.
Commissioner Delory.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo your sentiments that I would have no issue with if we needed to make mid-year adjustments, or even sooner. This board, past boards have always been willing to do that. One question I have that I can ask our staff to research, when we're doing either precinct redistricting or countywide, I just want to make sure, because in the past, the IT department did it, and it's the first time I'm hearing that, we're asking the supervisor of elections to do it, and there's additional now software that needs to be purchased. I'd just like to get some more information on that. Not today, but in upcoming weeks, I'd like to get some more information.
Will do.
And I do want to be clear that we don't do the precinct redistricting.
I understand that. I just, there was a couple of things that were said here, I just wanted to get some more information. That's all.
So county manager and, and supervisor, I think that you, you see the direction that this, this commission wants you guys to get together and see if we can sharpen the pencil a little bit more.
Absolutely.
With that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any, again, public comment on this budget? Seeing none. Mr. Crowell, you are up, sir.
Hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. I assume that everything's okay with continuing on?
Yes, sir.
Instead of break?
Sure.
Mr. Crowell?
I have, is everyone doing? Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Which one is it? The right row? Okay, we'll start out today. I'm, you know, my office is different. I mean, the board knows this, but the tax collector office is different from the other constitutional officers, is that we are revenue-producing, so we don't have to ask the money from the commission, we actually bring the money after. So that's, that's my goal, is to bring money, more money, as much money as I possibly can, back to the commission for the prior year, for the next year. Our budget is also different. We don't have a, we're not on our final budget numbers yet. We still have to finish June before we are ready for, for the actual numbers. So these are rough numbers right now, because we haven't gone through each one specifically. Comparing to our, this last year that I've been here, I've only been here for the six months, but for the six months we've been here, our, our budget, switch that over. Our budget fiscal year 2021 was 13,780. This May income of year-to-date is 11,610, and last year's prior, last year was 11,344. So we've actually brought in an additional $265,000 for this year so far. Now, for our expenses, for the same time period, we're looking at the budget expenses was 13,000, 13,940. Our May expenses year-to-date so far was 6.4 million, and last year's was 6.9 million. So now, we've already had a savings of $560,000 for this year so far. A preliminary estimate summary for next year, we're going to estimate our revenue at 13,821. We did add some additional services. We did add a secondary concealed weapon permit location to Castleberry. We are also expanding the size with, with the building that we purchased. We're going to be expanding that amount that we can bring people into our office. So our personnel services, we have about, our normal number is 122 employees that we would have in there. We're short of that now. COVID's been kind of hard for us to get people to come in and actually work and, and stay with us. So hiring has been difficult, but we'd like, right now, we're around 100. So we're looking at, right now, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, to get another 12 onboard. And these are not high, these are not any kind of administrative jobs. These are, there's, I think we're looking at two HR, because we currently have no HR. So we're going to have two HR coming in, and then the rest of it, we're looking at doing through people that will actually be CSRs working the front line. So our personnel services of 9.8 million is what we were looking at for spending for next year. And this is, like I said, preliminary numbers. We don't have all of our June numbers in yet, so we haven't really gone over our budget completely. Our operating expenses, we're looking at 1.9 million, and our operating capital of 1.2 million. So total expenditures of 13,015. So we're expecting a minimum excess fees of 806,000 is what we'd probably be presenting for you guys. Now, one of the big plans that we had since I've got in here was that we were looking to get rid of a lot of the leases, the unnecessary leases that we had in these, in, for the, for the tax collector office. The property address, we have at Sun Drive, we had, there was three leases total there. And then the Longwood branch, we had another lease there that we were spending 12,0978 a month. And that lease expires October 31st, and the Lake Mary admin rent was 15,515. And being, we're going to eliminate, those are the ones we're going to completely eliminate after their leases are totally up. So we'll be saving $341,000 a year just in rent by making the purchase of this building and utilizing that, and being able to condense. So on our administrative consolidation that we've already done, there were three offices there, like I said, at 15,515 a month. And there was, the lease end date on that is March 30th, 2023. So we, we eliminated two of those leases already. So we went from 15,000 to now 5,800 for the month until we, until March 30th. And then eliminating just those two leases for the remainder of this year is saving us $77,000 in rent just this first year by doing our consolidation. And our two lease termination date was May 1st. So we're no longer paying on those. And our new branch location is in Altamont, off Westmont Drive. Its building size is larger than we actually needed, but really, our office is important to have parking. That's always been an issue with tax collector offices. So obviously, the size of the building, to, to find something existing with the amount of parking we need is always going to be relative to the size of the, of the building, is going to be relative to how much parking we have. So we did purchase that building at 1.695 million. We estimate construction costs at around 200,000 to do the downstairs as a DMV. The upstairs doesn't need any work at all. And estimating about 5.5 years, that that building would have paid for itself the current rents that we're using right now. And the bottom floor will be 8,000 square feet of DMV office, and the top floor is 8,000 square feet of office already built out. And we're going to put our housing for our accounting, our IT, and possibly our call center to be moved into there. And there would be additional space even for downstairs and upstairs, that we can take the clerk of the court. And I was hoping that we can even get rid of that lease that they're doing over by the Outback Steakhouse in Altamont, that we could move him in there and utilize that to where payments could be made, where we could kind of work in conjunction together. If someone has a ticket to be paid, they can pay it right there at our office instead of having to leave the location and go somewhere else. And like I said, our numbers are not set in stone yet, but we are just doing everything we can to move forward and save money for the county. And I'm, just want for now, leaving it open if there's any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Zimbauer?
Mr. Crowell, this question is probably more for getting on the record for the public. And I'm not going to go into all the, all the controversy that has surrounded that office for the last many years. But, you know, the obvious question the public may ask, and I would ask it as somebody from the public, is understanding what has gone on in that office for the last several years, and the waste of taxpayers' dollars. But yet, we have a 3.8% increase in the budget this year. So in comparison to that, do you have any idea how much you may send back to the county? Because I think that's, we're all going to agree, where some of the monies were not
Yeah.
doing what they should have been doing. Any, any feel for that, based on what, what you're, what you already have accomplished since you've been there, and if that trend continues, where that might be?
Well, last year, that, you know, we had only assured 600,000, but we're looking now, even with the purchase of this building, to be able to hopefully, and like I said, until we get our solid, solid numbers, we're, we're hoping to bring in the million to, back to the county commission for this year. And then, of course, for the next year, we're bumping it higher to the 800,000, but we should have plenty more than that. Depends on our payroll, and of course, with the amount, the $15 an hour going up, and all of that kind of pushes on each other. So we got to see how much, how much staffing we're going to get, because we are pretty understaffed right now, and we need to get that, that staffing into the offices. And that's where we're going to be spending that money, that 3%, is looking at staffing. That's our, that's our biggest expense, is staffing. I mean, we, like the other, other constitutionals don't have the amount of staffing that we have, short of a sheriff, but everybody else is going to be, like, we have, you know, spread out all over the county, and, you know, with 100 employees. So that's, just gets very expensive, you know? Especially when you just go up a dollar, dollar an hour more, it gets really expensive.
Indeed. Great. Thank you. Nothing more, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Hurd?
I, I think this is also, just to get it on the record, there's an overlap, right? So you have leases that you can't get out of immediately. You've gotten out of everything that you can get out of. So we should see some articulation to the budget in future years when those leases end that would even further improve it, or at least negate need for future increases as cost of living goes up, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that building, that, the purchase of the building is an investment for the county. That's going to, that building is going to appreciate, especially after we go in there and do our, our alterations to it. It's going to bring a value to that building. Plus, you know, we don't, we're going to have it just as our building itself, without having to pay rent to someone else. It's, like I said, $340,000 approximately that we would be saving annually. But that's in a five-year plan of that, because we do have, we, we'll basically be down to the one lease come, you know, I'm going to need time for construction. So buying this building, we were stretching it to see that we can buy this building this year, and we're hoping for that. We're not going to even start the construction on that until next budget, because we're going to be like, we just can't, you know, we can't spend that much money. That quickly, we'll, we'll run out. So, you know, we really want to get that on our next budget. So we have until October of next year to get that construction completed, and then move into that office and let that, that, that timing kind of worked out. That's why we wanted to do it sooner than later, because we knew we didn't have, otherwise, they're going to ask us to sign another five-year lease, which is going to be another $850,000, and throwing away money. So we don't, we don't want to do that.
And then you'll still have the lease in Lake Mary that doesn't expire until 2023?
We do. And because, because the way our leases are written, we are, as far as if it's accepted on the budget or not, so we kind of can give, we have an out on those leases if need be. So we can always get out, we have to pay out, there's, you know, fees to pay out of them and stuff to get out of it. But we can, we can always, when we get farther in, we didn't do it this time because it was too expensive. It was going to cost like $50,000 to buy out the lease on just the one. So we were like, okay, that's too much money to put up front right now, because we're still going to have to house them somewhere. So we were like, okay, we can try to fit them somewhere in a back room in Sanford, and here in Sanford. We had to try to just accommodate for now. It's, you know, I would love to be able to fix all the problems immediately, but some of them are, some of them take a little longer than, than others to get, to get really together.
Well, and just to be clear, I, I think you've done an amazing job at fixing a lot of the problems
Thank you.
as quickly as you possibly can. And I'm just pointing out that there's going to be a tail on some of these problems that you'll live with
Yeah.
for another year or so.
Oh, for sure.
And we'll all live with it, and, and we just need to, yeah, or longer. I, I heard that. That was on the record down there. Yeah. So, so we do appreciate everything you're doing, and we are here to support that.
And for the record, we are working with the county also to try to recover as much of that, the funds that were misspent during those years. We are working with them in every way possible to try to get that back. And once this chapter closes after August, and we should be, be able to move forward on a lot of stuff, you know, without having to look in the rearview mirror still.
Commissioner Lockhart.
When did you close on the building in Westmont?
That was June, I think June 7th, I believe. I don't have my exact date. It was very right here in the beginning of June, we just closed.
Okay. And I know the previous tax collector wasn't necessarily interested in talking about collaborating at Five Points, but are there conversations there that might be, we might be able to look at in the future, or where are we with that? Maybe, and maybe that's a question for our staff, but where, where are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if, if we were going to move out of this location and go to, I would, I would go to wherever they, you know, they tell us his best, best location for us. You know, we would like, we would like to have the Five Points. It just depends on what's going to happen here. You know, I guess there's a lot of unknown still. I haven't, I haven't been really getting a lot of info on that, what's going to, I mean, we've heard about it a long time, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen a lot of growth moving forward on it yet.
Sure. I'd, I'd love if we could have an opportunity to have staff sit down with Mr. Crowell and just give him an update, and see where he, where you may or may not want to, to move forward. But I think that that's something that you, unfortunately, your office didn't have the benefit of participating in those conversations early on, so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, maybe more, yeah, I'm, I'm very willing to look into every aspect that we can try to work something out that's going to work better for the county,
Okay.
you know, in, in general.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Jer, good job.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
That's it.
Jer, I'd say it up. This is more for the record than anything else, but I, I do need to ask you a couple of questions. And I think that one of the things about the building that I was, I was pleased with is that, as, as a purchase, it also could be an investment. That area is continuing to be, you know, exploding as far as, you know, commercial property and with the other developments that are happening in and around that particular area of downtown Altamont. I know that that building will do nothing but go up in value. But for the record, no one in your office is now running around wearing guns.
No.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Thank you very much. And I would say the two most egregious, and there was many, but the two most egregious budget items that we saw consistently is the amount of money paid for attorneys, and the amount of money for, paid for, and I will just call it, public relations. I understand the encumbrance of, of contracts. Where are you in relation to those two, in your opinion?
We, we've eliminated everything. We don't have any, like we said, we don't have any additional administrative people that are not being utilized. It's really just the, the chain of command goes from me to my deputy tax collector, Cynthia, and then we have an executive assistant that we share. And then we have, you know, we don't even have our, our admin yet, that we're going to be building an admin, just two, and an admin department that would be handling that. As far as for contracts, we're not doing anything right now legal. We don't have anything. We're just wrapping up the last bit with the whole, you know, that we had with Gray Robinson, with, with Joel Greenberg.
So nobody has any personal services contracts that aren't defined?
No, absolutely none, yeah.
Well, that's wonderful to hear, for all of us, I think. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions by this board? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Really. Really appreciate it. Okay. Donna and her staff at Department of Health, and as you're walking up, I think all of us want to just, and so just to say this, we're incredibly thankful for everything that your office, your staff, your folks did during this pandemic. You've been incredible asset to this county, Donna, and we, and your staff has too, and we greatly appreciate it. Now, that doesn't mean we want to see a 20% increase in your budget.
I was thinking more 40.
But, but it's going to be hard to say no to you for anything, let me put it that way.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you very much, Donna. And you have the floor.
So thank you, thank you so much for the kind words, but honestly, I know I've been saying this throughout, the response is that we could not have done this without the support of the county. We could not have done this without the support of the community, whether it be the hospital systems, nonprofit organizations, faith-based organizations, everybody in this county pulled together. So we're so grateful. And the light is continuing to get brighter. So, so I do want to introduce a couple folks from our team here, and I'm pretty certain that you're familiar with our budget manager, Mr. Ogit Maida, to my right here. And then our, my assistant health officer, who is also oversees our epidemiology department and was instrumental through this response, is Ms. Anna Scutari. So they are with me today. And they will answer all questions. No, I'm just. So, so at first, before I get into the budget, you know, I just feel like walking into this chamber that I need to give you an update on all things COVID. Would you be interested in knowing first and foremost where we are at with COVID?
I mean, we're going to look like heels if we say no.
Well, and I would keep it extremely brief.
Okay, that's good.
So, you know, as far as, I know we talked a lot about the positivity rate and that being under 5% is really our goal. And so in the last 14 days, 11 out of those 14 days have been under 5%. So we are definitely making progress. And in fact, yesterday it was 4.55% and it has been as low as, you know, 2% in the last 14 days, 2.61 to be exact, on June 3rd. So, you know, our deaths, unfortunately, we have seen reported deaths continue, but very small numbers every day. Of course, one death is too many, we all know. But 525 deaths attributed to COVID-19 in Seminole County to date. We have a total of 35,873 cases, but our current positive cases are in the 300s. So again, that number is coming down, as well as the number of weekly cases. You know, about a month ago, we were reporting 400-plus, 500-plus cases in May. Now, last week, 200, or this week, 245 cases from June 8th to the 14th and June 1st to the 7th, 272. So those numbers are definitely coming down. Our rolling positivity rate for the last 14 days, 4.48%. So on average, so very encouraging. As far as vaccine, we are definitely, you know, making progress as well. 57% of our eligible population, that's 12 years of age and older, are vaccinated now in our county. A total population, including those that are not eligible yet, 47% plus have been vaccinated. You know, our efforts continue along with the county. As you all are aware, the fixed pods at the Oviedo Mall and Sanford Library, we're going to be demobilizing those this week in alignment with the rest of the state. You know, as, as the emergency operations center in the state in Tallahassee will be demobilizing to 96, and our EOC will follow suit to go to level three. So that doesn't mean that we shut everything off because, you know, the cases will continue. But we are looking to, to right-size, and you'll hear more about that in the budget presentation, as well as shift, you know, case investigation, surveillance, what that may look like in the near future. But we will continue to provide vaccinations and testing in our community. One of those, one of those modes is through the clinic on wills that the county supported us in securing, and then in our relationships with other partners like True Health. So just wanted to give you a brief. I just felt like I had.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chris Walsh, thank you. But can you just briefly touch on the Delta variant at all?
Yes. So the Delta variant is, the variant is prominent now in India, as you have seen on the media, the news that that's spread pretty readily. And it's felt that that particular variant, just like the UK variant, is, spreads more readily in the community. So far, as I know, we have not seen that here in our county. Doesn't mean that we won't. You know, we pretty much have every other variant that's out there. So the most predominant, though, is the UK, the B117. So we will continue through the Altamont Springs Sewer Surveillance System, which we get weekly reports on, as well as through the testing that's done through our state laboratories. We'll continue to monitor those variants.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Commissioner?
The good news is, I'm seeing from a lot of the studies is that the vaccines that we have in place are still effective against that variant. So that's an important piece of that messaging.
Absolutely.
Right.
Now, it's not as effective. It doesn't reach the 95%, but it is more effective than the flu vaccine.
Right.
So we're looking at around 79%. Yes.
Yeah, it's all relative. It's still better than the flu vaccine.
That's right.
Right.
Flu vaccine varies from 40 to 60% effectiveness every year.
So double that.
So, you know, I think that, you know, the COVID vaccine has been much more effective than was anticipated.
Absolutely. So a follow-up question. How many of our hospitalizations right now are folks who have been vaccinated?
So just a comment that I heard from one of the hospital CEOs, that of the deaths that they're seeing related to COVID in the hospitals, those individuals have been unvaccinated.
Okay.
So they will see folks coming into the hospital systems, a younger population, actually, and those folks who actually we cover well have been vaccinated.
That's good news.
So, sorry to go all things COVID, but I just had to continue the battle rhythm here. So, so our budget, you'll see that the presentation is, is similar to years past, but there's, you know, certainly COVID had an impact on our revenue, just as it did with the private sector as well. Here, you know, 13% of our budget is comprised of, and this is our current budget, 20 to 21. And just as Mr. Cole mentioned, our fiscal year ends June 30th. So the numbers that you will see today are very closely aligned with what we project at the end of the fiscal year in just a few weeks. But the 13% are state category, categorical GR funds or general revenue funds. Those programs are comprised of family planning, hepatitis, school health, TB, and AIDS prevention. And then you'll see noncategorical general revenue funds there as well. Our noncategorical, there's a formula that the state uses based on population, and it's, you know, that metrics has been there for years, that they give each county health department those dollars to support programs that are non-revenue generating, or there may be a gap. So that's what we use our discretionary funds for. The state federal funds include such programs as our Ryan White ADAP. You know, it's a prescription program for our HIV/AIDS patients, our BCCEDP program, breast and cervical cancer early detection program, women, infant, and children, immunizations, Florida healthy babies and STD, as well as public health preparedness. So those, that's what falls into those state federal funds. And those funds are filtered from the feds to the state health office and then, then down through the health departments through Schedule C dollars. Our local contribution has stayed steady at 807,970. And I do have another slide here that shows the additional dollars that you, you all contribute to some of our other programs. Medicaid, we do bill for Medicaid services for those who have Medicaid. Of course, we never refuse service based on inability to pay. We do have an eligibility process, and folks pay what they can according to their income. But if anyone comes through our doors and they can't pay for a service, we don't turn them away. We work with folks. So 4% of our budget is comprised of Medicaid reimbursement, clinic fees. We do charge, like I said, a fee based on ability to pay and income, about 5% of our budget. I'm happy to say that our environmental health fees and vital statistics, although vital statistics, with people being at home, we saw more birth records being requested, and unfortunately, we had additional death records requested. But both of those programs met the projected revenue for this fiscal year, if not more. So, and then we, you'll see in your packets, there is a grants narrative that supports primarily our community integrated mobile health services, which the county supports, but we've expanded that, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes as well, as to how we expand it. About 85% of our budget is attributed to salaries and benefits. And pre-COVID, we had about 99 full-time staff and 50 part-time OPS, other personnel services staff. So the projected budget for next year is pretty much the same there. This is just a pie chart to show you the distribution of those dollars in each of those categories. Now, as far as the impact on COVID in our revenue, people, you know, we told folks to stay home unless you absolutely had to get out and about because we wanted to mitigate the transmission of the virus in the community, and folks listened. So, you know, private doctors' offices, hospitals even commented that people were waiting way too late to come in for their illnesses, and they came in critical. So in our clinical services, we projected more, but we lost about $200,000 in immunizations revenue, and that was primarily our travel immunization program. With the travel restrictions, people were not going abroad. So also, our dental program saw a reduction of about $100,000 in revenue, and our clinical services, family planning, STD, HIV/AIDS, about $60,000 shortfall there. So if you look at our budget in 1920, our revenue at that time projected was 10-2, our expenditures 10-5. We had some infrastructure, major projects that year that we redesigned our medical records area as we went electronic into an innovation lab and also to house our community integrated mobile health service team. And then we also upgraded some offices, school health, business office carpeting. We worked with the Early Learning Coalition to start a brain food initiative. So you'll see, if you've visited the health department, three different areas in our waiting rooms that encourage parents and child, children to interact with educational books and items appropriate for that area. So we did that in partnership with the Early Learning Coalition. So the state saw, statewide saw a decrease in revenue in health departments. And of course, during the middle of a pandemic response, they came to the rescue to help support our budget. So we did get right-sized. You'll see there a negative, but we did get right-sized to bring us up to about 10% there. Eight and a half percent funding is what they gave us. We did have some certified forwards. You see that 2.76% that was carried over that brought us up to that 10%. So our revenues for this year projected at 9.8, total expenditures 9.6. No major projects this year whatsoever. We've been quite busy with COVID, and we really feel that the major projects were taken care of in the previous year. So we don't anticipate even any major projects in the next fiscal year. And so we are projecting, through grant dollars actually, has brought us up to the 10.3 projected revenues and expenditures for a plus of 103,000, keeping our trust fund balance, or savings account, if you will, around that 10% mark. So we are looking at coming up out of this, and we've already started to see an increase in folks coming back for our clinical services, and we really do anticipate that we'll have a healthy budget next year.
Good.
Now, I did separate, or we did, we did separate the COVID budget for you because our core budget gets a bit confusing when you add the COVID dollars there. Just to put this into perspective, pre-COVID, you know, we had downsized about 100 individuals from H1N1. This was very similar to us, you know, increasing our staffing to be able to respond appropriately to this of about 112 individuals very quickly. Fortunately, we have affiliation agreements with 40-plus universities and colleges where we were able to recruit very qualified masters in public health-prepared individuals to support our response. So we were very fortunate in that respect to have those relationships pre-existing. We added 112 individuals. The revenue here that you see, or I'm sorry, the expenditures, well, revenue and expenditures, 3.3, just a little bit over 3.3 million dollars received, and the breakdown of how those were spent during the response here. You know, with the salary, OPS, temporary employment, we did do, we did enter into some contract services for individuals that we needed quickly when we couldn't find the talent right away. Property rental, we did rent two additional warehouses to store the personal protective equipment. We're also accepting some of that overage from the county now to store for future use, and we'll be distributing that as needed once we stabilize this response. And then the medical vaccine refrigerator, freezers, printing, information technology with 112 additional people. We had to buy computers for these folks. It's hard to do case investigations and contact tracing without phones and computers. So, so that's where those dollars were spent. Now, in 2122, there are still a number of unknowns here. We're taking direction from our state health office. Evidently, there are dollars available to continue our epidemiology response. We have about 55 individuals that we hired for the Epi response and the remainder for our immunization pods and such. Of course, with our immunization pods demobilizing, we will not need all of those staff members. So we're right now looking at right-sizing and trying to transition those folks to other jobs. I know True Health received some federal dollars to do more outreach vaccinations. So we've already been in discussions with their human resources department to see if we can transition some of these staff because they've been amazing, you know, in supporting us through this. And we've had a lot of retired nurses that we brought on who just came through for their shots and said, what can I do to help? And I said, we'll line you up right here. So we were able to employ them during this response and even talked to some of the hospital CEOs, and they're very interested in hiring our nurses. So we're looking at transitioning. That's where we're at in this phase. So you'll see that the projected expenditures for next year is lower. It probably will be much lower than this even. You know, we're just looking at what the need is. We certainly don't want to hold on to people just because the money's there. We are, you know, trying to be fiscally responsible and hold on to staff as we need them and transition them if we don't. Now, to answer the question where the dollars will go once returned to Tallahassee, I have no idea. You'll have to ask that question up there. But we're going to do what we need to do here locally. So I wanted to also include the, the funding that the county supported us with, you know, additional funding and some of the supplies. So the county did purchase about $40,000 worth of personal protective equipment to support during this response. That primarily was at the beginning of the response before we had these dollars available, and we knew that there was an immediate need. So the county was able to help us there. The ultra-cold freezers, you've probably heard, you know, in anticipation of the Pfizer vaccine, knowing that it had to be stored in ultra-cold freezers, we felt the need to go ahead and purchase those. It's a good thing. We were, we were told it wasn't necessary, but I'm glad we did because we were able to initiate vaccine sooner than many counties. And then the nursing carts, very helpful in our pods. So the county was able to help us there. And then Epi pens in preparation for folks who may have side effects, you know, from the vaccine. So in total, about 154,000 plus that the county supported us early on in this response. And then this is just a breakdown of the staff. So just to talk a little bit about our epidemiology department, I mentioned H1N1. When we, our staffing went up to almost 260 during that response, and then over the last 10 years, well, actually, several years afterwards, we lost about 100 staff in workforce reduction, Medicaid reform from a cost-based reimbursement to fee for service. And so our budget went from about 14 million to about, just under 10 million. So our Epi staff was comprised of two epidemiologists and one Epi manager. That was it before the response. There was no way that we could keep up with. And so that just speaks volumes, I think, to the importance of public health infrastructure. We have so much talent on staff right now, we would love to be able to keep, and we're trying the best we can to search out grants or other revenue sources to, I mean, we're not going to keep all 55, but we would love to keep at least, you know, three to four of those staff who have been instrumental in helping us through this response. And I'm sitting right next to Ms. Epi here. She, you know, it's just amazing what we've been able to accomplish, the data and so forth, the reports that you're seeing, that's all because we built that infrastructure. And we would like to keep that quality service going if we can. So you'll see the breakdown in the different types of staffing here. The nurses, 19. Hospitals would be very interested in hiring those nurses, so we're going to do, you know, what we can to transition. This, this slide does reflect the additional dollars that the county has supported us over the years, and basically, we're just years, and basically, we're just asking for level funding in these areas so we can continue these services. So the diabetes prevention and education, our gap was about $40,000. We had, we have one registered dietitian in that position. We were able to get some grant dollars from one of the hospital community benefits program to hire a nurse who is trained in chronic disease prevention, and she speaks Spanish. She's bilingual. So we realized that a number of our clients who need this service are bilingual, and so now we have two positions allocated for this program, DSME. School dental sealant services. We were also able to get some assistance one year from the hospital, community benefits to support expansion to the fifth grade. This is a gap again, $20,000 that we needed to make that program whole. We also asked for additional dollars from Tallahassee, the Department of Health, and I believe they gave us around $25,000 to support this next fiscal year. In addition, we are growing our dental program and with a dental hygienist as well as a dental assistant that goes out to the second and fifth grade classrooms. You'll see in a moment those services. The school health services were down this year because not every child was in their seat, so you'll see a reduction in services, about 50%, pretty much consistent with the number of children who were face-to-face education. Mobile health, the county supports us with $100,000, and then our teen outreach program. Our top program delivery was a little bit delayed this year because it was all hands-on-deck. We did pull our school health team to help Seminole County public schools and private schools to respond to COVID, to do case investigations and contact tracing, but we were able to achieve some of the services through hiring a part-time facilitator who was trained, and she visited the Midway Safe Harbor and delivered the program there. So we fully expect with the addition of one more staff member next year that we'll be able to deliver that program 100%. Just wanted to highlight some of the grants. So we're, again, trying to be self-sufficient and go after as many grants as we can. Now, the problem with grants are they're usually not sustainable. You know, they're usually for one or two years, and the expectation is that in order to continue that program, you need to have a sustainable model. So, you know, with the, you'll see in your packet a grant narrative there, and it goes over some of the grants we were able to achieve. Several of those grants were COVID-related. So the CDBG grant in the city of Sanford, they wanted us to address food insecurities as a result of COVID as well as disparities. The Kresge Foundation Grant, this is a national grant, same thing, health disparities, health equity during COVID. You know, we certainly saw disparities in the folks in race and ethnicity and folks getting tested as well as vaccine. So we have used those dollars to expand our integrated mobile health services in those communities. You'll see here the NHO grant. This is a little bit this year, a lot next year. The majority of that grant is going out to the community. Of that, almost $500,000, about $137,000 are going to be transitioned to Advent Health to hire another counselor at the Hope &amp; Help Center. We also allocated about $50,000 toward marketing for the Seminole County Sheriff's Office. You'll see a picture in your packet of the Lynx bus and the overdose messaging there from CDC. And then we did use some of the dollars for a project manager at the Health Department as well as another community paramedic. The community paramedic goes out into home visits. After the SCORE team, the Sheriff's Office identifies individuals and makes the initial visit. They refer to us. Our community paramedic goes out with another paramedic and does another home visit to reinforce the services available in our community and also help people navigate those services. So you'll see a report in your packet on that grant and what we've accomplished to date. And so you see in 2122, not as many grants. There's, the total there is larger because primarily the NHO grant for the overdose response. Unfortunately, during the COVID-19 pandemic, we saw an increase in opioid use and deaths. We unfortunately went the wrong direction here, but understandably, people were looking for coping mechanisms and, you know, certainly resorted to those mechanisms they were comfortable with pre-COVID. So we have a lot of work to do, you know, to help folks to reach services. So just a summary of the testing. The Department of Health has provided 43,408 tests. This is through the drive-through testing we had at our Health Department as well as testing in long-term care facilities when there was an outbreak, our Epi department, you know, schools, anywhere where the testing was needed. And then the county, of course, this was a joint effort. The county in the testing sites, you'll see the amount there, $37,534. This is a breakdown of the age groups. I know that there's often been questions about, well, the 12- to 14-year-old age group, how, you know, what percentage have been vaccinated? This is just for your reference here, and, you know, what's certainly impressive is that the total number of people that have been vaccinated in Seminole County with a population over 486,000 have been close to 230,000 now. And then the, for those 65-plus, about 79%. And that's important, as you know, during this response because that was our most vulnerable and still is our most vulnerable population that suffered the most severe consequences, you know, complications, hospitalizations, and deaths from this virus. The total number of doses administered by any provider in Seminole County, and now the vaccine is widely available, pretty much every pharmacy, the hospitals, private doctors' offices, we are transferring a vaccine per request to private doctors' offices in Seminole County. We do have enough vaccine to do that currently. So in, with all of our providers in Seminole County, over 410,000 doses have been administered here. And then those Seminole County residents receiving doses, you know, the number of doses, 415,000. Some residents, you know, opted to go to other counties for their vaccine, so that gives you the total there.
Donna?
Yes.
Sorry. Am I understanding that if someone went to another county, they were not counted in that number?
So the 415,000, those are, if you pull down the report for the total number of Seminole County residents receiving vaccine, it's 415,000. If you're looking at the number of vaccines administered just by Seminole County providers, that's the 410.
Got it.
Okay. So here, it's, you know, just, again, just what I mentioned to you, the Department of Health could not have done this without the county's support. There was no way. And I can't speak enough praise to the county and Allen Harris and the team. Phenomenal. You know, just the customer service surveys, folks coming through the Oviedo Mall, just exemplary. So thank you, thank you, thank you. This would not have been a success without you and our partners. You know, I know I mentioned the American Muslim Clinic, Atef and his volunteers at the pods, you know, Allied Health helped us out, you know, the faith-based organizations. There's just so many, too many to mention here, but this was definitely a community effort. So between us and the county, we provided 239,780 of those doses. And then the private providers you see there, over 170,000. So this, this is just a breakdown of the services that were provided this fiscal year to date and compared to last fiscal year, a comparison here. So as I mentioned, about 50% of the students were in their seats, you know, learning this year, and so the services were just shy of 34,000 compared to last year, about 75,000. We fully expect that number to go up in screenings and such when the students return. And then our Women, Infant, Children Program through federal mandate, we've been providing that service virtually, and in August, we will be transitioning to face-to-face services there. So this year, they've actually done quite well, virtual services. Some of the clients prefer that now, so the, you know, federal program is working through that to see what's best for the clients. But 89,122 services in total compared to last year at 124,265. So very close. Our environmental health services, as mentioned before, you know, very close to what we actually, we provided more services this year than last year, 3,892 compared to 3,701. So interestingly enough, you know, certainly during isolation quarantine, businesses definitely, you know, took a hit, but the economy has bounced back quite well, as I can see, just on our services, environmental health, the septic tank permitting and other permitting, the businesses are certainly picking up and building and so forth, and the real estate market, I see. So, you know, things are certainly looking hopeful. And just a couple pictures at the end here to highlight, you know, the partnerships. In public health, and I know I mentioned this in previous budget years, is, you know, the transition in public health to population health, community health, especially during our downsizing over the last 10 years, is critical. We couldn't deliver these services without community partnerships, and we will continue to be as efficient as we possibly can. We are growing the Community Integrated Mobile Health Services. You'll see a report there. And those services, we have grown from two community paramedics to now a staff of nine. And that's been possible through the dollars provided by the county as well as through some of these grant dollars, and the state cardiac program is another that we received dollars for. We would love to continue to expand that program because we see the benefits, you know, especially during the COVID response, the home visitation, almost 2,000 home visits, you know, during COVID to deliver vaccine as well as test to anyone who was unable to get to a site. So fortunately, we had that program in place before this event, and it was an easy transition. So with that, I'll just direct you to your packets. If you have any questions about the presentation or about any information and reports in the packet, we're here for you.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Donna, very much. I think, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Zimbaro.
Just a comment. You know, I think we soon overlooked that many of our surrounding counties don't have the relationship with our Health Department that this county does. And I think it doesn't take long to look at some of the numbers during this pandemic. When we have Seminole County that, if the numbers are accurate, about 7,700 per 100,000 contracted the COVID-19 during this pandemic in relationship, our surrounding counties were in the 10,000 to 13,000 per 100,000. It speaks volumes that not only has the Health Department, you know, our EOC people, this county commission, and the community as a whole have come together during a very uncertain time to make, eliminate out of lemons. And I think that goes a long way, and I think your folks and you, your people being able to react as quick as you did in reaching out and getting those relationships in place, the ones that weren't in place and others that had been in place for many years, served this community very well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, there-
I think everybody shares that sentiment.
Thank you so much. There is a short video that our staff put together, and it highlights, you know, the one year from March to March, our COVID response. And we actually showed this prior to Memorial Day in recognizing those who have given their lives for this country as well as our first responders, and we consider ourselves part of that first responder group, and we wanted to appreciate our staff. So one of our staff members put this video together. If you're, if you would oblige maybe five minutes, we'd love to show it to you.
Sure. Absolutely. We got time.
March 2021 marks one year since the COVID-19 response started, and it is due to the efficient and dedicated service of all of the public health officials and the support of the community that this response has been a success. Seminole County received the report of the first presumptive COVID-19 case on March 12, 2020. Even before the first case, the Florida Department of Health in Seminole County, along with Seminole County Emergency Management and a number of partners in the community, were preparing for the possibility of this pandemic. Personal protective equipment to keep staff safe were ordered promptly, and the incident management team planned ahead for all types of scenarios. A total of 275,500 pieces of personal protective equipment were ordered, in addition to 12,000 bottles of hand sanitizers and 12,000 disinfectant wipe packages. The Florida Department of Health in Seminole County COVID-19 Community Information Line received over 11,000 calls in one year. Education on how to prevent the spread of the virus was a top priority. Presentations were provided to elected officials, educational institutions, long-term care facilities, daycares, rotary clubs, chambers of commerce, Board of County Commissioner, and shared through media. Our team participated in trainings, webinars, conference calls, virtual meetings, media requests, and press conferences throughout this response, keeping track of national guidance as well as state and local executive orders. Local trends and data was also a priority. Our dedicated team of epidemiologists, nurses, and other professionals have worked long hours on contact tracing, case investigations, facility assessments, vaccinations, and data entry. Health kits were delivered to families in need. Food and medication were also delivered to individuals and families in isolation and quarantine. Through March 19, 2021, Seminole County provided 422,684 COVID-19 tests, of which over 14,000 of those tests were provided by the Florida Department of Health in Seminole County through drive-through and pop-up testing events. The Community Integrated Mobile Health Services led over 30 testing events, including reaching out to African-American and Hispanic communities and churches. We also added to our DOH Seminole family a total of 131 staff who were hired from August 2020 through March 2021 to assist with the COVID response, including registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, epidemiologists, contact tracers, data entry specialists, and many others. Believe it or not, our team has worked a total of 73,524 hours in this COVID-19 pandemic response and spent over $2 million during the first year of the COVID-19 response. So in preparation for a pandemic such as what we are experiencing through COVID-19, a flu vaccine exercise took place early during the response. December 23, 2020 marked the start of the COVID-19 vaccinations. Vaccine teams started to receive their first COVID-19 vaccine, and on December 28, the first vaccine pod was opened at the Oviedo Mall. A total of 155,248 COVID-19 vaccines were administered in Seminole County in the past year, and the Florida Department of Health in Seminole County administered 107,235 of those doses to 85,379 Seminole County residents. Outreach has included visits to faith-based organizations, 55-plus communities, areas with barriers to access the vaccine, and the addition of a new vaccine trailer. This monumental undertaking could not be possible without all of the Department of Health in Seminole County staff, volunteers, contract personnel, Seminole County Emergency Management, and community partners. This has been the longest response we have had so far in public health, and it has been all hands-on-deck, challenging but yet also rewarding. The appreciation of clients visiting the testing and vaccination sites is evident and expressed to the staff who are serving at outreach events. It has been a long, arduous year, and the Florida Department of Health in Seminole County has kept its doors open and continued the operation of services to keep the community safe and healthy. Even though COVID-19 cases continue to be reported, we are focused on the health and safety of our community through testing and vaccinating Seminole County residents and visitors to protect them from infection and severe illness from this new virus. Leadership would like to thank each and every one of you for all that you do and remind us all to stay healthy together.
Thank you, DOH Seminole family!
Fantastic.
Thank you very much, Donna.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have the Lynx here. Does everybody feel comfortable enough to continue on with them?
So we're not going to have lunch?
Oh, yeah, we'll have lunch.
We have to be here at 1.
Well, 1:30. What time did we now have, Tim?
I still have to get an hour and a half for lunch.
What time for the courts?
We had them scheduled at 1.
Okay. Then let's, Jim, are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. Then we're going to take, we're going to take a lunch break right now. We'll be back at 1. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll be back at 1 o'clock. And Jim, there's a bunch of really nice restaurants along the, here in Seminole County. We'd love you to enjoy, you know. Please feel free to go to any one of them.
Chairman, I thought you said that you would take Jim.
Yes, and I was just going to say, you know what? You're getting as bad as these guys up here, you know? Thank you very much. So thank you, everybody. We'll be back at 1 o'clock. We'll be back at 1:00.